All right, council come to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Brainerhorst.
Here.
Banstrak.
Here.
DeYoung.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Here.
So, we continue to have our meetings virtually, so if you're attending by telephone, you will be able to provide verbal comments during the dedicated public forums and public hearings. I ask that you would please keep your microphones or telephones on mute until the time at which you want to speak, and if you're viewing the meeting presentation online, you could experience a delay or some loss of connectivity if this occurs. The full meeting presentation can also be viewed at the City Appella website. I'm going to announce that we will have a policy and planning meeting at the end of our regular council meeting to discuss conditional resolution support between the City Appella and Pella Main Street Market LLC. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Brander Horst-Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Score.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banstrak.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
I also would like to announce we will have a closed session pursuant to IOCO Chapter 388.9, Paragraph 1, to discuss marketing and pricing strategies or proprietary information of a city utility if its competitive position would be harmed by public disclosure not required of potential or actual competitors, and if no public purpose would be served by such disclosure. Just to note, we will do our, take care of our regular business, we'll move into the policy and planning before we go into closed session. So, we'll do the policy and planning before we close, or go into closed session. So, at this point, anyone that wishes to address council regarding any agenda item, please state your name and address and limit your comment, try to limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council with anything that's on the agenda? Anyone on the telephone want to address any agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Score?
Score.
Hopkins, discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Score, yes. Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Banstrak?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to public hearings. A public hearing on the East Interchange Infrastructure 250th Avenue Improvements Project bids. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain the site and I'd like to direct the council's attention to the big board for presentation of the site and as Mayor Ward stated, tonight's public hearing is in concern to, or in regards to, proposed project on 250th Avenue, and specifically the resolution that we are considering this evening would approve plan specification form of contract, except the engineer's estimate of cost, that ultimately awards the contractor these interchange infrastructure project improvements. As council is aware, this project that we're considering tonight is in support of the new Layley North American Headquarters project. Fortunately for our community, Layley has decided to build a new North American Headquarters facility in our community, roughly 100,000 square foot facility, roughly a $22 million project, and will also add approximately 15 new jobs and retain 55 current positions in our community. Now, when we look at the project in a nutshell, if you were to look at the map on Slide Number Two, north is actually to the right-hand side over here, and what we're looking at is Exit 44 in the community. So, what was being proposed is an upgrade to the existing gravel road, and specifically what we're proposing is roughly upgrading about 880 linear feet south of where the concrete currently ends at. The upgrade would be to an urban cross-section street, which means we're upgrading the street so it can accommodate heavy truck traffic for the Layley facility and others located on the site as well. We do have a description of the completed improvements list on bullet point number two, and they are also included in the council packet. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, we did conduct a bid letting of the project on June 9th, and fortunately, we did receive a bid for the project. It was with construction in the amount of $282,307.50. The good news is, it was significantly below the engineer's opinion of probable cost, which was just over $398,000. Project engineer is the engineer in Kim, and they are recommending awarding the contract to Wicks Construction on this. It is important to note that the Iowa DOT has pledged to raise grants in support of this project. They have also concurred with the finding for the project as well, and specifically with the recommendation of awarding the contract to Wicks Construction. And finally, I would also like to point out that the Mahaska County engineer has reviewed the proposed contract that we are considering this evening, and has also approved of the contract and directed us proceed, as council is aware, in accordance with 2080 agreement with Mahaska County on the project. We did award this bid, and proposed bid to Wicks Construction, over to the county engineer for the review. They had no comments on it, and so we're proceeding accordingly. So, with that, if council were to, finally, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to mention if council were to approve this resolution tonight, final completion would occur right around September 15th, which provides about 45 working days for the project. And with that, I believe that concludes the staff presentation. Denny?
I do have one correction, Mike. It's my bad. This is a 24-foot wide, eight-inch thick wood basket, rural section with six-foot shoulders. Everybody reviewed plans to prove that. My bad, minimal, and then I set Mandy up on the pipeline.
Okay, basically, we have a concrete street with ditches, correct, Denny?
Correct, with shoulders capable of having three and a half foot turners added on someday.
Okay, I stand corrected. It will be a concrete street, that will be capable of accommodating heavy truck traffic, but it will have rural ditches as opposed to an urban cross-section street that's similar to a city street, so.
Was that in the bid package, what you just described?
Yeah, it's all clear. It's just me right now.
But I mean, that's not have anything to do with the numbers?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so they bid, or what you just described is what was put out?
Lot design, DOT approved, all the engineers reviewed it, 24. That's the same as we did on north by the mayor on the newer shop going north, same amount.
Okay.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thanks. Mandy, any written comments?
No written comments.
Council, comments? Anybody in the audience have a comment? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
What?
Banstrak, Hopkins, discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstrak?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the resolution. Resolution Number 6304 entitled Resolution Approving Plan Specifications Form of Contract Estimate of Cost Receiving of Bids and Making Award for Contract for the East Interchange Infrastructure Improvements 250th Avenue Improvements Project. Mike, anything to add?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Score?
Skip out DeYoung, any discussion? Is the engineer just trying to make us feel good with these high estimates, or have prices settled a little?
I think a little of both. I think down from the engineer's estimate was a little high. We didn't know either what the county DOT requirements were going to do, but it's pretty much the same degree of low basis times.
Anything, council? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Banstrak?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. Public hearing on the Pella Municipal Airport Automated Weather Observing System AWAS Project bids. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct the council's attention to the big board for presentation on this item. For those following at home, I'm on Slide Number Four, and as Mayor Ward stated, tonight's public hearing is concerned with the current Pella Municipal AWAS system, and we do have a picture of the system located on Slide Number Four of the presentation tonight. It is important to note for this proposed project that we did hold a bid opening on June 9th for it. Once again, we did receive one bid for the project that was Boltburn Incorporated in the amount of $168,630. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $163,000, so it does exceed the engineer's estimated cost. That's also the opinion of the engineer, and what they've recommended is that you do not believe rebidding the project would result in a lower cost for the system. So with that, HDR is recommending awarding the contract to Boltburn. Staff is also in agreement with this recommendation. Now, as far as the funding for the project, the lion's share of funding for the project will be provided by the Federal Aviation Administration, and what they've pledged of entitlement funds is $150,000 for the project on this as well. Council were to approve this resolution this evening, final completion on the project would occur by September, scheduled to occur by September 15th. So with that, Mr. Mayor, be more than happy to answer the questions of the mayor. Council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Mandy, any written comments?
No written comments.
Council, comments? Any member of the audience, either here or online, want to comment?
We are still awaiting FAA concurrence on this one, so we won't proceed until we have to make sure we have, or take over the grant, qualify for the grant coming this fall.
Is that a 90%?
Nineteen.
You think it'll ever go back to 95? Probably not.
Maybe 82.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Or?
Brander Horst-Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Banstrak?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the resolution. Resolution Number 6305 entitled Resolution Approving Plan Specifications Form of Contract Estimate of Cost Receiving of Bids and Making Award of Contract for the Pella Municipal Airport AWAS Replacement Project. Nothing to add, I assume, Mike?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Can I get a motion for approval? Hopkins, score, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Banstrak?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolutions. Resolutions Number 6306 entitled Resolution Adopting Annual Wage Scale.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, for this item, it is important to note that we did discuss this item with council in depth during our latest policy and planning session, which was conducted on June 1st, 2015, and specifically, as Mr. Mayor Ward stated, what this resolution would do would adopt amended wage scale for July 1st, 2021, and extend through June 30th, 2022, commonly referred to as FY 2122. Now, as far as the major changes that are part of the wage scale, it is important to note, the wage proposal tonight includes a 2% across-the-board increase for all employees, excluding those in the executive pay plan there, as far as an adjustment on the scale. We did discuss extensively during our June 1st meeting, the origins of the city's pay planner, which is adopted in 2018, and how the 2% is linked to the employment cost index, which is published quarterly by Bureau Labor Statistics. And so, from the latest data that we have, the actual change from March of 2020 to March of 2021 was 2%, and that's what's being recommended this evening. It's important to note that the city's budget actually had a budgeted on 2.5%, but tonight's recommendation is 2% to align with the policy that was previously established by the Pella City Council. If council were to approve this adjustment tonight, the total increase in wage compensation for city employees would be just below $130,000 on that. I believe that concludes our presentation. Actually, we have a few more items here, and we also talked about some grade changes that we've had here for part-time employees as well, and once again, this was discussed in depth on June 1st during policy and planning. With that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff's presentation this evening. Be more than happy to discuss. Any questions the mayor and council may have on this item?
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Score? Brander Horst, score, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Banstrak?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6307 entitled Resolution Adopting Health Plan Premiums. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, and once again, very similar to the wage increase that we had in the previous item, it is important to note that we did discuss this item in depth on June 1st during policy and planning as well, but specifically what this resolution would do would adopt the city's healthcare premiums for effective for fiscal year 22, and once again, we're talking about the fiscal year that would start on July 1st, 2021, and extend through June 30th, 2022. It is important to note that the resolution that we have tonight proposes a 5% increase in premiums, and if adopted by council listed up on the big board, would be the city's share of the premiums that we have here for single and both family plan, as well as the employee's share. Overall, the employees for the City Appella are responsible for 10% of the total cost of the premium, so once again, what's being proposed this evening is a 5% increase in the total premium with an associated increase for both the city's share and the healthcare cost increase, as well as the employee cost as well. Finally, Mr. Mayor, it is important to note that this has been reviewed by city administration. We are recommending approval this evening, and we'd more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Brander Horst, Brander Horst-Hopkins, discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Banstrak?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution Number 6308 entitled Resolution Adopting Revised Personnel Policy Manual. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct the council's attention to the big board for presentation on this item. For those following at home, I am on Slide Number Eight, and as Mayor Ward stated, what this resolution does is adopt the revised personnel policy manual. It is important to note, once again, we did discuss, previously discussed these items on June 1st as well. Now, I think it's a fair characterization when we look at it, we do have highlights of the proposed changes that are listed up on the big board. This information was also included in the council packet as well, but there's a fair amount of just housekeeping items that we have, and really making adjustments towards positions that have either been amended or reclassifications that have occurred during the last four months as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. In addition, probably the one substantive change that we do have is the residency requirement for those positions that do require residency requirement. Instead of changing the residency requirement from 20 minutes, what's being proposed is to change that to within 30 miles of the corporate boundaries as well, just for consistency in applying that standard for those positions that do require city residents as well. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
Thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Score, Hopkins, discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Score, yes. Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Banstrak?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinances. Ordinance Number 994 entitled Ordinance Amending Solid Waste Fees in the City of Pella, Iowa, First Reading. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, what this ordinance would do is actually increase the cost for, establish rather new fees for the city's yard waste program that we have. It is important to note that these costs were passed along to us by the Metro Yard Waste Agreement that we currently have, Metro Yard Waste Agreement, excuse me, that we currently have with Metro Waste Authority. Now, listed up on the big board is the suggested new prices, right around a 13% increase that we are considering this evening for the fees. It is very important to note that there's no administrative markup included in these fees. This is the cost to administer the program by MWA, so those costs are directly passed along to the city residents or users of the program in accordance with our city policies on this program. So, if this ordinance were approved this evening, once again, the new prices that we would be looking at for the program are listed up on the big board, but briefly, this would be individual bag, yard waste would be a dollar eight, that currently costs 95 cents. At five-pack bags, it currently costs $4.75, it'd be at $5.40. And individual stickers currently at 70 cents would be at 85 cents again. So, once again, this is simply passing along the cost of the program that we have to third party providers of the program as well, and I believe that concludes the staff presentation. Mr. Mayor, be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Banstrak, DeYoung, discussion?
The only thing that I thought, we won't change this now, but this is kind of a mundane transaction. Could an ordinance say that whenever the metro raises rates, we just do it, that we don't go through city council, since we're just passing it on dollar for dollar to them?
That's probably a legal question that will have to run by the city attorney on, but we'll take note and report back to council on that item, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstrak?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed.
May I make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading?
Support.
Okay, Banstrak, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstrak?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. I need a motion to adopt the ordinance, to adopt ordinance Number 994.
Move to adopt.
Brander Horst, score. Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Banstrak?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, Abstract of Bills Number 2081, can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Score?
Brander Horst, score, any discussion, questions?
Denny, what's lift station for?
Download, house station.
House station, okay. I see there's a diminutor, or that was ordered, a diminitor.
Now, I can't even say it, I know what you're talking about.
I butchered it too, but what's, what's, what's that? Do you know?
I'm not sure what you said, it's all, we're here in a minute. What was the price on that one?
Twenty-two, twenty-two nine with shipping.
Twenty-two thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's rebuilding of the, essentially our macerator now.
Oh, okay.
The things that chew stuff up.
Yeah.
We've tried to rebuild one every year, every other year, and the prices went from like 16 to 22.
Okay.
Like everything else has been going on.
Thank you.
Macerator, is that, or no, or there's another name to it? I'll get back to you on that name.
I'm not going to very well pronounce it. It's diminutor, diminutor. Basically, it's a macerator grinder.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
In English, it's grinder.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Banstrak?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you'd like to address us with this evening? All right, any member of the public have any issue they would like to bring before the council tonight? If so, if you're here, you can come to the microphone, state your name and address. If you're on the phone, you have an opportunity now to address this with any concern you might have. Okay, hearing none, we will move immediately into our policy and planning session on the discussion, discussing the conditional resolution support between the City of Pella and Pella Main Street Market. Mike?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and as Mayor Ward stated this evening, what we're here to talk about tonight is proposed conditional resolution support, and really, the staff's intent to discuss the resolution support tonight is we'd like to make sure we answer any council questions or address any concerns council may have on proposed conditional resolution support, because it is considered for formal consideration, or will be considered for formal consideration on July 6th of this year, so it's important that we try to address any concerns or questions council may have. So ultimately, we're seeking input tonight from the council on this item. Now, as far as the conditional resolution support overall, what the intent of the conditional resolution support is, is to outline what the city council's intent is with the proposed development if they meet certain obligations. We're going to be covering the intent as far as economic development incentives later on the presentation, as well as the obligations the developer will have to be committed to in order to earn economic development incentives for the proposed project. The proposed project we are talking about tonight is the Pella Market, and as the council is aware of where this is located, that is basically 503 Main Street, so it's just south of the Hinkacees Gas Station on Main Street, India's north, and the South Main Development. The yellow highlighted area is where the proposed Pella Market is going to be located in this south of Indian Street is the South Main Development that we have down there as well. Now, overall, when we talk about the Pella Market, what the developer is proposing is an operation that is very similar to the Gateway Market in Des Moines, so that's a very successful operation in the Des Moines metro area, and we do have, the third bullet And we do have the third bullet point is summary of the operations that will be provided by the proposed Pella Market as well as the various dinner and lunch options and the breakfast options as well in bullet point number four on slide thirteen. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, anytime we talk about economic development incentives, it's always important to take a look at what kind of our base, what we always align with, and anytime we consider economic development incentives, and usually a good base to start with when you talk about projects and proposed developments is the city's comprehensive plan. As the council is aware, the comprehensive plan devoted, significant portion of the plan talking about the lack or the shortage of restaurants and drinking establishments in the community. It also outlines strategies for attracting additional restaurants, drinking establishments in our community as well. And often when you peruse through the plan, what you'll notice is that it identified this particular area as a service gap, which means that the local demand significantly exceeds the supply available as well. Now, when we talk about the comprehensive plan and proposed location for the Pella Market, it's very important to note that this section of Main Street was actually identified as a commercial core or economic development area for the city of Pella. So when you consider the operation, really the unique operation of the Pella Market as well as the location where it's at from a comprehensive plan standpoint, staff believes that it strongly aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. And that's an important consideration anytime you propose or propose to have economic development incentives to assist with projects. From our standpoint and planning standpoint, we believe it strongly aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. In fact, the council made the same findings when we rezoned the property earlier this year as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. It's also very important to note, when we talk about this particular development, to consider where we were at a few years ago. In two thousand and eighteen, the city council did adopt the Wester Park Urban Renewal Plan. Now, as far as the urban renewal plan on slide number fifteen, for those following at home, we do have an outline of the proposed, or of the Wester Park Urban Renewal District. But the reason why I'm bringing this up and pointing this out is if you would have went back a few years ago and looked at this development in two thousand and eighteen, what you would have seen is the old Wester School on the property where the current South Main Development is, as well as three residential homes, including one code enforcement property that we affectionately called the Big Yellow House from the city staff's standpoint that you see up on the big board. Now, when we formed the Wester Park Urban Renewal Plan, we spent quite a bit of time on this urban renewal district. And one of the reasons why we spent a considerable amount of time is it was a feeling that both the city council and city staff level, that the district itself contained blight within. And in fact, we went and we hired a firm that was a simulating quarry to do an analysis of this development or this area that we were highlighting up here on the big board with the old Wester School as well as the Yellow House. The consultant found that seventy-five percent of the area that we just outlined in this urban renewal plan met the definition of state blight under state guidelines or state definitions of blight as well. And based off that finding, the city council did declare or found that this should be a blighted area through the urban renewal plan. That's very important to consider, to consider economic development incentives because the development that we have tonight, when we look at economic development incentives, when we formed this in two thousand and eighteen, one of the goals of this was to eliminate blight through economic development. So from a planning standpoint, it's very important when we consider the projects in this district and what's taken place, that A, they align with the city's comprehensive plan, and also they have positive future economic benefit for the city of Pella. That was one of our main goals. When you look at the South Main Development, housing's a critical need within the city of Pella. And we felt that you clearly checked that box, and that development was considered by the Pella City Council. The Gateway or the Pella Market, also when you look at the proposed development that is scheduled to take place in this urban renewal district, I think that's a key item, a key need that's identified in the city's comprehensive plan as well. And certainly with the developers proposing to build on site, we believe will definitely eliminate the blight that was, was present in two thousand and eighteen on the site. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the development itself, it is important to note that this is a redevelopment project in existing Pella that was a blighted area that we have as well. Now, because of the conditions that the city has, when you consider this particular site, this location, the blighted development, the confined site that we have, the developer is requesting tax increment incentives from the city of Pella. Now, overall, before we get into the details and talk about the Pella Market, it's important to note the total investment for the market is very significant. It's around roughly about a five million dollar project. In addition, if you read through the conditional resolution of support, what the developer is obligated to do is operate a venture similar to the Gateway Market in Pella, Iowa. It's very important to note, when you're talking about operating the Gateway Market in the Des Moines metro area, you're talking about a significantly bigger demographic area than in rural Iowa as well. So there are risks involved for the developer to conduct an operation similar to the Gateway Market in rural Iowa as well. Now, as a result of the significant investment as well as the operational risk that the developer is undertaking with the development. In addition, when you consider the confined space that they are operating in, the developer is requesting fifteen years of tax increment financing rebates. Now, based on, and we'll be getting on into the details very, very soon on this matter, but based on the agree upon assessed values that we're going to be discussing this evening, this equates over fifteen years, and it's actually a period longer than fifteen years by the time you can count when the city would actually start receiving taxes on that. But it's actually capped at fifteen years as far as the rebates. The total amount over a fifteen-year period would be one million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, it's very important to note, in exchange for that, the developer would be required to agree to a minimum tax assessment that we would have on an annual basis. The minimum taxable valuation after rollback, which means that what the developer would actually be paying property taxes on would be a minimum of four million dollars. That would start in the base year, it would increase two percent each year. I'll explain why that's significant here very soon as well, but that's in essence the broad overview of the rebates. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Okay, when we talk about rebates and tax increment financing, a couple of things to keep in mind. Anytime you consider tax increment financing rebates, one of your questions that we should be asking ourselves is would the development occur without incentives? When you look at this particular case, we're talking about a former blighted area, a confined site that has a lot of challenges involved with it as well. You look at the operational aspects of this, operating the Gateway Market. It's a more venture, it's the Gateway Market that is currently being conducted in a large metropolitan area versus rural Iowa, there's risk on it. We clearly feel without the economic development incentives, it is very questionable if the development would proceed. So that's very important to keep in mind tonight as well. It's also important to note, when we talk about tax increment financing rebates, you're talking about future property taxes received by the city of Pella. You're not talking about the current property taxes on the property as well. So everything we're talking about is based on the belief, or the contention upon the belief, that there's going to be new valuation built on site. Anything that gets rebated, rebated back to the developer will be on an incremental basis, solely on the incremental value added to the property this evening. So please keep those two items in mind. Now, because we are talking about tax increment financing rebates, we believe under these types of transactions, that the risk of the development and the risk of the arrangement for this is basically transferred to the developer. Basically, the developer is faced with, if they get tax increment financing rebates, they have to pay property taxes to the city to receive the rebates. So when you look at this, the city does not have an upfront investment on it. We believe that most of the risk is transferred to the developer on this as well. Now, when we consider that the tax increment financing rebates, it is very important to note that that's only a portion of the property taxes that are being rebated back to the developer. And specifically, the easy way to understand this is when you talk about the city's property tax rate, it's roughly just over thirty-two dollars per thousand dollars evaluation, I believe, or maybe a little bit higher than that. Under TIF laws, what happens is when we talk about rebating back to the developers in arrangements like this, what this allows us to do is we could capture the operating levies by the governmental taxing authorities on the matter. Every single government authority that currently taxes on this property will still receive their debt service levy on the property as well. In addition, they'll currently receive the valuation of those properties that exist today. So what happens when you have tax increment financing rebates is you establish a base year, you establish a frozen valuation, all the base property taxes go to the local governmental entities. The incremental value, what will be proposed under this, this method, the operating levies would be rebated back to the developer over fifteen years. All the taxing entities would still keep their debt service levy. And we'll go through that example here very, very soon. The last thing I'd like to point out before we get into the specifics of the arrangement on it as well. Now, anytime you look at tax increment financing rebates, oftentimes we get a question, well, what kind of impact is this going to have on service levels for the city of Pella? Overall, what I would say is when you look at commercial development, that's kind of the golden ticket in city development, is to have nice new commercial development. And the reason why, if you recall, we talked about the developer is obligated to sign a minimum tax assessment with you agreeing to the valuation of at least four million dollars on a commercial property. And we talked about their investment was five million dollars overall. Under current tax law, if we would have a project, a five million dollar residential property versus a five million dollar commercial property, it's much more advantageous for the city to have the commercial development property from the commercial, from the commercial property tax standpoint. Residential property, I believe, is taxed at fifty-four percent of its assessed value. Commercial property is at ninety percent of its assessed value. In this particular case, what the developer is agreeing to is that a minimum property can be assessed at is four million dollars after rollback. So we believe that when this property does come online, it will have a significant tax impact or benefit to the city of Pella as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. I believe we explained the first three bullet points. But when you look at it and do a comparison of what was there before, what we have listed up in the middle section of slide eighteen is just an analysis of the debt service levies that would be recaptured and distributed back to the local governmental entities if the Pella Market is built. And so when we look at this, we believe that the debt service levies that the local governments would be receiving would be about fifteen thousand dollars a year. When we talk about fifteen thousand dollars per year, that's the Pella County School District, that's Marion County, that's the city of Pella. If you look at the residential homes that were in place there as far as what went back on the total tax rate to the local governmental entities before, that was somewhere right around two thousand six hundred dollars. So which means if the Pella Market is built, it has generated net increase in annual property taxes for the local entities of thirteen thousand dollars. This is even despite the rebates that are given. So with that, we believe that it would have a positive impact on the property tax base. But even more importantly, when you look at what was there before and look what is being proposed, the significant investment by the developer, from our standpoint, what we're not talking about is the additional visitors that would come to town for the Pella Market, the taxes that would be generated by that in addition to the property tax benefit. And we believe overall, a project like this has, has the potential to trigger other development in the area. Now, this is very important because recently we've talked about redevelopment plans on Oskaloosa Street. And so some project like this that is in close proximity to Oskaloosa Street could lead to future development in close proximity to Oskaloosa Street in this area as well. So overall, staff believes this could be a very, very beneficial project to the city of Pella. We also believe that we can administer the project without increasing significant increases in our workforce as well. So that's, those are important points to keep in mind. Let's go ahead to slide number nineteen, Mandy. Now, as far as the conditional resolution support, once again, if you said you dedicated this on, the developer would like to begin construction of the Pella Market this year. However, before beginning construction, they would like to know the city's position on tax incentives. And so this is one of the reasons why we're considering the conditional resolution of support. As council is aware, anytime you do anything with developers, we have a thick development agreement that we tend to get into. Those things take a while to construct, be reviewed, and so on. The conditional resolution of support allows the city council to express its intent on economic development incentives if the developer meets certain obligations. And we'll briefly go through those high-level overviews as far as what those obligations are. The big thing to keep in mind when we talk about the conditional resolution of support, this does not create a binding agreement on behalf of the city of Pella. It's probably just expresses the council's intent on economic development incentives, which is, means something to developers as well. So let's go ahead, Mandy, and talk about those obligations. Now, as far as the responsibilities of the developer, one of the major responsibilities are is they're going to have to construct the proposed Pella Market by two thousand and twenty-two. It's also important to note that they need to meet all city legislative requirements, including the planned unit development requirements. If you remember, during the planned unit development, we spent quite a bit of time talking about design standards. There's an elaborate design for the Pella Market. They would be obligated to build the Pella Market to the letter that was stated in the P U T. And that would require a significant investment. The Pella Market would need to be constructed by December of two thousand and twenty-two. Now, as far as the tax incentives, we've talked quite a bit about this, but the developer to receive rebates would be required to sign a minimum tax assessment of at least four million dollars unless agreed upon number. That number would have to increase by, by two percent annually. So keep in mind, that would be the minimum that it could be assessed at by the Marion County assessor, is four million, increase two percent per year. The developer would be obligated to operate the Pella Market for at least six days a week, for at least eight hours per day. And then, what we have listed up there, just so there's no misunderstanding on what is going to be offered out of the market, this is the description of the services. So that'd be the last bullet point that we have there on slide number twenty. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, this is what the city would be agreeing to on our end of the bargain. We would provide up to fifteen, assuming that the developer met all those obligations that we went through on slide number twenty. We would provide up to fifteen grants of economic development rebates so the developer would have to pay the taxes to be reimbursed on it. Assuming that all occurred, we would rebate a hundred percent of the tax increment that was produced by the development. Now, if everything played out as scheduled, that total, that would be one million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand over the next fifteen years. Now, it is important to note, once again, this would be conditioned upon the developer meeting all legislative required processes that we talked about. In addition, it would also be subject to the Pella City Council approving a development agreement with the developer as well. So that's a high-level overview of the conditional resolution of support again. What we're interested in is we want to make sure we address any questions that council may have, and also more importantly, any concerns that council may have because this item is going to perform consideration early in July. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Before I have to really discuss any questions or concerns that council may have on this item.
All right, thanks, Mike. Okay, council, questions, comments, concerns? How's the time?
I fully support the project. I am just concerned that we all are heads up that we're setting a precedent here supporting a commercial project. And the next guy will have his hand out, and the next guy after that as we hopefully go down Oskaloosa Street.
Set the, the minimum at tax now, will it recapture if it exceeds one point seven seven five in the fifteen years? Will it exceed the one point seven seven five, or is it capped at the one point?
Capped at one, yeah.
Okay.
One point seven, so if the assessor comes in, the assessors, what this tells the Marion County Assessor, they have to agree to it as well. The Marion County Assessor is obligated to assess the building at four million dollars. But if it turns out their comps turn it out in future years at five and a half, six million, there's nothing to stop them from doing that. So four million is just the base minimum that they're required to do.
Then the, the minimum days of being open is six? So are you planning six days a week? Or are you planning seven?
At least six, looking at seven.
So you're planning on seven, on seven days a week? A minimum of eight hours a day?
Yeah, right now, we're looking at six. The question is what Sunday looks like is the biggest question that we haven't figured out yet.
I also really express, I think that, that as a city, we have certainly shown a lot of support for South Main. I think we're in there for about six million in the South Main. And that's a housing, and I was all for it. I also think that the infrastructure that we put in out in Prairie Ridge, all for it. It's infrastructure. I struggled a little bit with daycare, but anyhow, at least we come away with something out of that. We will have a building. This, we're putting in one point seven seven five to a business. And as Mark stated, we are going to set a precedence. Today, it's, it's grocery stores and restaurants. What's next? Bars? Nightclubs? I mean, you know, where, where are we going to stop? So I have a real problem with that. I'm, I'm all for the project. I had no problem with the design, and I thought that was the right place for it. But I think there's other people that have put up similar structures or businesses that have paid for the building himself. And that's basically what we're doing, is we're subsidizing the construction of the building. Just my humble.
I guess I look at it, and I agree with your caution flag, I totally get that. But I also look at the fact that we're embarking on something that we haven't done before as a community, and that's urban renewal and urban revitalization. And I think it's kind of a different, in, in my eyes, it's a different beast. It, it isn't giving the tax increments to, say, a building on the square. This is, this is a, an area that's been deemed blighted. It's a project, like I say, that it, we haven't made precedent on this before. It's new territory, it's new turf. And oftentimes with urban renewal, urban blight, urban incentives, you, you find that you do give special incentives in that other communities have given special incentives for individuals who are deemed risk takers. And so from that standpoint, you know, I'm, I'm in support of it. Because I think this is an, we need to encourage people to take this risk.
I'm not trying to be a wetline.
You're not.
Just eyes wide open, gang.
Yeah, eyes wide open.
And I appreciate it, and I, and I agree with that. But I just want everybody to, to understand that this is something we haven't done before. And we're going to, we're going to be hopefully doing more of this and looking at this with a different set of lenses. It, it can't be the same set, set of glasses that we had on before, so.
Anybody else?
I'd say I'm agreeing with Lynn. Also, just with, with the idea of that ultimately the intention of investing any, any amount of monies that we have, there's, there's a hope of a return. And we get down the road and we say, wow, whatever, that was a real bad mistake. Well, then, we know in the future. But we may, we may look at it and say, wow, that was a great decision. Let's, let's see if we can incentivize more urban renewal, more developers. Time will tell.
I agree with Lynn in what she said. I think it's new, it's different, and I'm excited about it. I'm super excited about the project. I, I swear.
What would a banker do?
Well, I, I think what Bruce said is right. We're, we are subsidizing the construction, but I think we, we have to if we want nice things like this in, in town, because a bank would probably say no if you had to service that, that, that much debt. So if, if these are the kind of things that, that we, we want to have come in, into town, then I, I think we have to be willing to give up that tax revenue for fifteen years to get, get that, that established and, and going on that. I think the key to this, that makes this easier for me on something like this versus other is that blighted area that Lynn just mentioned, which was, was not defined by us. It was defined by a third party coming in, if I understood that, that correctly on that. So I don't think we're pulling any strings for, for, for anybody in that regard. So from, from that standpoint, it's, a subsidy is probably going to be needed. And if we're, we're providing that upfront on money, we wouldn't get any way if it was never built. It becomes a little bit easier, yes, for me.
Anything else? Okay, so we'll be on the agenda on July, what'd you say, eight?
Six.
Six, July six. Our July six meeting will actually vote to approve, not approve this conditional resolution. Thanks for the input, Mike. I guess I don't need anything else.
I have my directions. Thank you.
Okay. Let me get back to where we were here. All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter three eight eight point nine, Paragraph one, to discuss marketing and pricing strategies or proprietary information of a city utility if its competitive position would be harmed by public disclosure not required of potential or actual competitors, and if no public purpose would be served by such disclosure?
No movement.
Young Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call roll.
DM?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spoor?
Yes.
Bannstrom?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
All right, so while we are in closed sessions, if you're on the telephone, you can remain on the line. And when we're completing the closed session, the audio for the meeting will resume. All right, we're back in open session. I don't think there's any motion come out of our closed session. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Spoor?
Hopkins, Spoor. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spoor?
Yes.
DM?
Yes, yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Bannstrom?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to nothing, Mark voted twice.